Okay.
I walked a panel yesterday.
Oh. Looking like.
We did ice skates just about.
When we came to our seven o'clock meeting here, the budget committee meeting, they hadn't come through yet here and I literally. Gate skiing thing to get from the car. Good morning, Ben.
This way.
That's been there for a while.
That's Matt's Christmas.
A good bike.
Yes, you have to be careful when you walk.
Maybe we could send it up to your place.
We got stuff like that.
I think he was meaning to take care of it, but you know.
How are you?
He's been busy.
Good. It got stuck over there for.
Morning.
Morning.
Hunter Snyder. You know, okay.
I can't remember what the do. Do you have? Is the beginning part of the meeting sort of?
Public comments?
It's all is it closed door and then I come back later or?
No, you're fine.
Public comment and so you're here.
And then we'll take up agenda items and usually we do them on public at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
We try and be thoughtful about that. So it is for some reason I must have set my phone so you can't barely see the.
It's not after.
Okay, at ten oh five, I will open the January twenty fifth Select Board meeting. And we will have public comment in just a minute, but first I'm going to take a non-agenda item up. And I'm wondering, Ben, how would you feel if we started our regular meetings at ten o'clock as opposed to nine o'clock?
Well, I'm fine with that.
You are? I think we have consensus with now let's hope we remember. We'll try and start our regular meetings at ten o'clock and we will try and enjoy by meeting time. So.
Okay.
All right. And then now we will do. Any public comments that we have, we do have Hunter Snyder with us. Do we have? Okay. Mister Snyder, do you have a comment for us?
No, I don't think so. I just Ted provided the with some ideas for for consideration with the warrant article, but I don't know the full extent of the details of the, you know, an article that this like board is interested in proposing, so. I'm not sure what the best way for us to discuss that.
We are going to take that up. About the fourth item when we get to the regular stuff, so hang hang tight. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, Ms. Williams. Have you something for us this morning?
Good morning. Hello. Have a nice meeting. I'll just linger here.
Okay, grab a cup of coffee. Or tea. Do we have anyone else on? I don't think we do. No?
Nope.
That Jordan lady again.
Yeah, I know. She's just checking up on us.
Troublemaker. Okay, so we had two people, zero comments. And we will move on to minutes of January ninth, twenty twenty four. We have one edit that we're going to make. Mister Khan left the meeting early. And we will add that into the minutes.
Yeah.
Was overlooked, so. What do we wish to do with these minutes as amended?
I'll move them.
I'll second.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Ben. All those in favor say aye.
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 Judy, aye. So those are approved. Okay, that would be these. Maybe a scribe. Okay, we have two manifests to review and approve. We have what is probably the last two thousand twenty three manifest. An amount of forty four thousand six hundred ninety three dollars and forty nine cents. And we have the first twenty twenty four manifest in the amount of one million five hundred eighty six thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and sixty one cents, of which one million five hundred thousand is the school.
I'll move on. I'll second.
Okay, Ben, thank you. Thank you, David. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And Judy, aye. So they are both approved.
Thank you.
Money sure goes fast, doesn't it? It goes in chunks like that.
Sure does.
Gotta get rid of that town school.
Should have been here last night. Um, a note in case someone wishes to discuss this, the final operating budget proposed by the town is two million eight hundred and twenty one thousand four hundred and ninety four dollars and sixty nine cents, which is a two point two percent increase.
Right, down quite a bit.
And a lot of it was just picking little pieces out of each or many line items.
Well, it's almost little pieces to get. You know, given the level of inflation that the world has experienced over the last year, that's really pretty good.
Very commendable. I think we've done well. And the other piece of that, which I don't see noted on the agenda, but thank you, Deena, for all the supporting stuff is the capital reserve fund worksheet. And last year it was three hundred ninety thousand. These are the funds that the town votes to put into our capital reserve funds. And this year we're proposing four hundred and ten thousand twenty thousand dollar increase. Interesting to note that the fire truck that we purchased in payments will be paid off in twenty twenty five. That's an eighty two thousand dollar yearly payment. And the fire station will be paid off in twenty seven. See what else have we got here? Town office bond payments will end in twenty eight. This year is the last year of the highway building bond payments. That little baby went up twenty years ago. And we have a solar bond that will be completed in twenty twenty nine. So we're chugging away on those big items. I think the budget committee will probably be looking at the next big purchases, whether or not we're going to take all out of capital reserve funds or finance them. Will a lot of it will depend on interest rates.
Does Scott's backhoe come out of the capital reserve fund or are we paying that already?
Heavy equipment. And just to note on the back is the list of the capital reserves and trusts and.
Oh, great.
And and it's the December thirty first, two thousand twenty three balances.
Excellent.
And those are from the MS nine, so they're not my tracking numbers. They're official Bar Harbor numbers.
Okay. Oh, that's really handy. Thank you. I had not turned that page over. All right. Shoestrack Road draft warrant article. We did get a letter from Mister Snyder and.
Got there.
Very fast.
Um. Uh-oh. Where is that? Those warrant verticals.
Yeah, good thinking. Ours, you mean for?
Ours.
I don't think I brought it.
I don't think I brought it unless I have it in this statute here. So we can read it so people know what we're talking about.
I guess I didn't realize you were coming, babe. They are already.
We should.
Well, it's on the webpage. The town webpage with the warrant.
Well, let's see.
Hey, Jordan, bring us down a copy of the warrant.
That's the school warrant. I'm looking for it here.
Increase the weight.
So.
Oh, wait a minute. Do you got it?
I have got it. It would be, I think it's article ten. It is to see if the town will vote pursuant to RSA two thirty one colon forty three to completely discontinue the section of Shoestrack Road that was made subject to gates and bars in two thousand seven. Specifically, a small portion of Shoestrack Road of approximately one thousand four hundred and fifteen feet in length, located approximately one thousand three hundred and forty five feet east of River Road to three thousand one hundred and sixty five feet west of Dartmouth College Highway. If passed, the public will no longer have any rights to use the road for any purposes. However, no owner of land shall without the owner's written consent be deprived of access over such highway at such owner's own risk. And this requires a majority vote. And the Select Board has voted, I believe, last meeting, maybe the meeting before, to recommend this article to the public.
Just to comment on that, once that comes up at town meeting, you're perfectly willing to capable of amending it, admitting the town meeting to go the direction that for all is to go in the direction that we wish it to go. We've had these things in the past and there's, you know, there's two groups of people obviously on on this road, one that wants to fix it up and have been doing it at night. And then your guys on the top who don't want cars going on. So there's going to be this discussion at town meeting. And so I'd be prepared to deal with the town meeting. But our feeling is is you know, opposing this, so the discussion will take place in the town meeting will come up with a conclusion.
How does the, how do I engage with you formally in the setting? Do you, can we, do I need to?
You could talk right now?
No, but do I need to name myself or? For the record?
No.
So the, so in the, in the town meeting, if, for example, the Select Board says that they want to give every resident of lime and orange and then I, in the meeting, I I come up and say, well, I want everyone to have a pineapple and an apple. And then we just, does the town then vote on? How do you, how does, how do you engage the town in making a decision that differs from?
Can I interrupt before you answer that?
Yeah.
You can't. You can't. You can't change it. Like, let's say you have a warrant.
Oh, we have to vote it up or down?
You have, no, wait, you have a warrant article that you've posted, made public, warned it, everything. When that goes to town meeting, if it's, let's continue a road. And it goes to town meeting and somebody stands up and says, no, I want to make it a trail, class A trail. What you can't make that change. That would be, they could vote, voice vote there.
I thought we discussed it last week. There were, an amendment could be made to.
Not to change the meaning of the article.
Okay, but could, I think when Judy and I, Judy and I talked on the, on the phone. And what I was wondering in the first place was whether at town meeting, we could a warrant article could propose a series of choices to the townspeople. And of course, that's not how it works.
If, if there was a warrant article, which we probably would hesitate to recommend, but it could come in, which said there are three choices that you have. What they usually do is we would have one that said we are proposing that the road be discontinued. If this vote fails, the next article number, whatever, is proposing that it become a class trail. So you kind of go one, two, three.
Okay.
And well, and if you post. There's alternative warrant articles that have alternative outcomes that people can sort of vote for which one they want.
Is that an effective use of, is that a good way to do it if you?
I think if you're, personally, I think if your group feels strongly that you want a different outcome and you maybe don't want to wait for a year and you think that what we're proposing is going to fail, you should probably petition to have a well thought out, the letter you wrote was very well thought out, article put into the warrant.
Okay, you would need to write it. You would, you'd need to come up with your own and you need to get twenty five or more signatures.
Deena, what's the timing now? Could we, could the select board propose another warrant article?
We could.
Yes, you could.
I mean, I, I gotta say, I, I'm.
A choice.
Yeah, I, as you know, from, from the past, I think I differ from Ben and maybe Judy a little bit on this. I, I've been sort of in favor of closing that and making it so that traffic can't go across it because I'm worried that there could be an accident or the road could collapse, there could be damage, somebody could not understand what they're getting themselves into and not read the signs and and get hurt. And I think that would be bad. I mean, Mister Schneider's proposal of making it a trail effectuates that result. It would, it would it would close the road off so that nobody could drive over it anymore. And so I, I.
That would be a class B trail and I believe, because class A trail allows property owners.
Yeah, like what we have at River Road, but, but, but the public wouldn't be able to go across it and be
Right.
Shut off and.
I, I like that proposition with one exception because class A trail, you could not put boulders or.
Well, the Jersey barriers could work because any, any landowner who needs to use the land for forestry or ag needs to ask the town anyway to do that. And a Jersey barrier can be lifted and moved out of the way, whereas a boulder is a lot harder to move. That's why in my letter, I suggested the Jersey barriers instead of the.
Yeah, I think that's.
Or you just put, or you just put a gate in.
Yeah, you put a gate like we did on, on River Road.
And, and then you have, you either have a lock that only the property owners have a key to.
Yeah.
Something like that. Yeah, I know.
I will tell you that the property owners that will be affected are people that already have access to their property from Shoestrack. Or from Maple Lane.
So maybe they don't care.
You know, now if one of these houses wanted to, like he said, do a timber cut, they needed to put a timber road in or something like that to do that. If there's a gate, they can still do that.
As long as the gate stays closed.
You know, the one concern I have about that, about this proposal is that, and I understand there, people have said, well, look at the statute that there's no liability to the town under this, you know, if we make it into a class B trail. I'd want to confirm that, I think, or have we.
It has been confirmed. That is correct.
Okay, well, yeah, that seems like a good solution to me. I, I don't know. So I don't know how you guys feel about it, but I would certainly be open to adding an alternative warrant article to the to the, to the list that sets that up as a proposal so they don't have to go and do it as a petition warrant article.
And unless, you know. And then it, no, 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 I'm just thinking in my brain and it would be, need to be made, thinking of all the things that might happen that it would be made clear in discussions that the town is not responsible for upkeeping this trail.
Yep.
You know.
The, the biggest risk to that trail or road or whatever is erosion. And all it takes is that those ditches that Rusty put in, it was about to go into the brook before he put that call.
It was.
Yep.
And then that would have simply been simple erosion that would have taken it into the brook.
And, and if it erodes and people can't bike, ride their bikes on it, then.
So it is.
Well, that's gotta be, that's gotta be made clear because I don't want anybody, you know, that people complain to us about stuff that they have no reason to complain to us about and that will come back and buy it.
Well, you know, somebody in, in the future, if, if the, if, if we make it a trail and then the trail falls into the brook.
Which I expected, well.
Probably at some point and, and people come back at town meeting and say, hey, this trail is falling into the brook. We'd like the town to repair it. Well, you know, if people want to pay for that, they want to pay for lifeguards. We, we thought that wasn't a good idea. I, I, I mean, they get to decide that, right?
No, you can't use tax, you wouldn't be able to use tax dollars. I don't believe on it.
Oh, okay.
The conservation, the conservation commission could choose to essentially at the beginning, down on River Road with that other trail, that's what was going to happen. The conservation.
And then they chose not to take care of it.
To take care of it.
Which they have a lot on their plate and that's not default time.
Right, no, not at all.
The other thing too, from what I noticed is that if, if folks did want to, if it slid into the brook, you know, folks will find other ways to go, go through there on their bicycles if they stop and have to carry them or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, or, or.
It's their choice.
Or, or the property owners will fix it up or some, or, or the, some charitable organization will raise funds for it and fix it up, but yeah.
I think on to.
I think that on that's legal.
Yeah, according to the RSA, right, Deena? Those, your funds are allowed to be used and.
No tax dollars, right, right, right.
But charitable ones could be used and there's certainly a lot of those.
Well, and, and here's the scoop. If you're turning it into a trail, it's still technically the town's right of way.
I don't know.
Because that's not what you're giving up. If you discontinue it, you're giving up the right of way and that's why it goes back to them.
Don't have ownership.
So I need to check that. That would be one thing to check.
So I think, I think.
You guys could disagree with me and vote, you know.
That would be the first time ever.
No, it's totally fine, but I, I would, I don't know, I kind of like letting, throwing this out to the town and letting people decide what they want to do.
I like that only if it doesn't come back to us in some way. I'm hesitant because I was on the board many years ago when we actually closed that road. And you never know what's going to happen. But I like trails. I think they're great on old roads. I'm so leery about this particular road because it is so fragile and I'm with you that I think, you know, anyone can sue whether or not there's liability and it can become very complicated, but if we want to create a second warrant article, if we feel that we can close the loopholes that potentially would be giving us some heartache, at least initially. We should think about doing that and we don't have a huge long time to do it, but.
No, but you're meeting in
Two weeks.
Two weeks and.
We could have one.
You would have time to do something if you so choose. We can make time to do it.
You know.
And it's not a money article.
No, it's not a money article.
Sounds back to you too. I mean, the other approach to this is that you do a petition warrant article and then you gotta go out and get twenty bucks. You have to draft something and you have to go out and get twenty five signatures. If you'd rather do that, that's okay with me, but.
You know, I just, the reason I wrote the letter is because I thought that this would be an opportunity for the Select Board to work with concerned parties in a way that I, I, my dream was actually that we could switch the order such that the class A trail proposal would be the primary warrant article subject to, if that gets voted down, then you would pick to return the land to the butters.
It won't matter, I think, because what will happen at town meeting is it'll get discussed in a, in a.
Altogether.
Yeah, and it's, and it's clear that there are alternatives and then people.
So that, I guess that doesn't matter, but I didn't want to put a petition warrant article together because for some reason in my mind, that seems adversarial. And I just think it's so.
It's nice if it's not adversarial, I would agree.
And more, more time.
Oh, it's, it's gonna be an adversarial discussion.
Discussion, yes.
That's okay.
It's got the western side and the eastern side of the.
Yeah, there's people who want to be able to drive, well, yeah, who could save them a bunch of time.
Yeah, I did that on that too. That's also questionable.
Also, if you do a if you draft an additional warrant article about the trail, don't forget that you as a board need to vote to recommend or not recommend. So you could.
We could still draft it.
Still, you can draft it and you cannot recommend it, but it would still be there.
On the warrant.
You can still leave it on the warrant.
Now, I guess my, my question is whether it's possible in this setting or later to convince any members of the Select Board that it is worth recommending. And if there are questions about the suitability of that second warrant article, if there's a chance we could discuss those. I, I, I'm really curious to hear about the history with the previous case and, and how that informs the concerns you have now.
My hesitation, yeah. And, and I can't remember. I know Deena has looked up the numbers, but at that time the, the road was in very bad shape again and we looked at completely rebuilding it, which was very expensive. We looked at rebuilding it with.
Big mistake.
There were three choices.
And the other choice was to rebuild it for one lane, one direction only, which in my mind often is a nice solution to some of these old narrow roads. And the third choice was to close it subject to gates and bars. And at that point, between a half a million dollars and over a million dollars and no dollars and that seemed like a logical thing to do. And we did put up a gate and it either got taken down, rammed down or.
It was never closed.
Left open. So.
Well, the gate couldn't be locked and.
Right, it couldn't be locked, so it.
According to the state.
Yeah.
The RSA, right.
Right.
Yeah, and, and you have to leave it unlocked so people can open it and go in and it's just like an arcade room, way to go where.
If your cows were in there.
And sheep were part of it.
So, so it, it was, and we did spend a lot of time and actually a lot of money looking into the alternatives and I would never have envisioned it continuing to be used. And of course, our vehicles are heavier. There are more people. And if it's really being in Crossroads was pretty young back then. It wasn't as big as it is now. So, you know, there weren't school full of people taking a shortcut.
Think Crossroads uses that?
We've heard.
I don't think anymore. I think they might have. Not really officially, but.
Yeah, this summer I, I observed two school buses. I think they must have been camp kids from one of the Lakes camps that ended up going down the road and I, I sort of died inside because of course the road that summer had experienced so much rain and there was a big slump. But I think Crossroads just uses it to dump brush before the.
Yeah, they own the land on the south side.
Right.
So what is our pleasure? Do we want to see about drafting an alternative warrant article?
I'm in favor of that as I'm.
How do you feel, Ben?
Ben's giving me the.
Evil eye.
He's giving me the stink eye, no.
Well, it's not going to go away.
Yeah.
Town meeting discussion, it will be lively. And I don't know that our choices will be great. The selectmen have made choices over the years that I feel have been great. They opened up the turnpike because of having to get it open in May when you know, turnpike used to be pretty well controlled. Nobody could even try.
Yeah, that was a very costly mistake.
Yes, it was. It was a mistake.
Draft and turnpike goes to the ski way. Yeah.
Pass the ski way.
That road cost the town a ton.
Well, so we should fix that. If we think that's a mistake, we should fix that.
The water's over the dam. You're not going to turn off the number of cars. That's one of the.
I thought, I thought that was one of our things was to think about making it a seasonal road again.
Yeah, but I don't think that.
Well, you have some other roads to address. You're going to do that in the coming year because there's a couple other ones, Pinnacle and some other off, dead end, offshoot roads that are really right of ways and we shouldn't be maintaining or plowing.
So anyway, we digress. Yes.
Yes.
I'm just wondering if I could offer one comment in anticipation of a book aside on writing a warrant book. If, if it is proposed that it be a class A trail or be, I would, I would suggest the Jersey barriers or boulders instead of the gates because the gates actually open the town up to the like the possibility of people using the road as a through road for passenger vehicles.
No, it doesn't.
Are you gonna lock? Oh, if they.
It would have to be locked.
Okay.
And the, and the two inside owners would have keys, a key.
Okay.
Oh, and we can do that.
The, the inside owners can leave them open?
Well.
Well, that would be bad, wouldn't it?
Or we could keep a key and, you know, if they're going to do a timber job or need to, you know, have it for a special thing, then they would need to be able to do that.
So I need to go back and reread the A versus A. B is more restrictive.
Yeah, no access.
No access. Whether or not.
Do you want River Road?
We did an A there. And mostly that was because there were three summer camps that needed access to their caves.
Yeah, this section is really nothing.
And it's, and it's for walking, walking in and bicycles. You can't take wheel vehicles on it.
Wheel vehicles like motorcycles or.
Yeah, motorcycles, vehicles, cars, trucks.
Motorized.
Or, yeah.
Snowmobiles, you know.
That's my understanding.
Well.
Well, whatever we do, it's going to be wrong.
So if.
Come on.
Come on, I, I know, I know you say. I've been rounding this down a long time, but I've seen, you know, well-meaning select boards make boneheaded decisions one time after another.
I don't see any boneheads here. I don't see any bones here, but.
Well, maybe giving them a choice at town meeting is the best thing to do.
Yeah, it's not our decision.
It's fine with me, I mean.
I think I would.
You know, the the whole river debacle, um.
Yeah, that's.
That could have been done a lot different, a lot easier, if the select board wasn't boneheaded.
Well, I I think there was a lot learned from that whole process, so, not that. Those selectmen are still here.
I I can't really talk about that unless we've heard about.
Yeah.
Well, what I what, just put it simple, it came down to. Um, there was big discussions beforehand and the select board was not listening to people's comments. You could have stabilized that road, which they did when they did the construction, just to get their trucks on half of it. They drove steel pilings in and stabilized the road and the contractor tells me. Says, you know, I could have gone all the way through and done this, made that road usable again for a hundred fifty thousand. And then we said we built Mount Sahui, Sahui is down there and.
What do they say, hindsight is twenty twenty, so.
No, I I had foresight.
It's gone, don't let it bother you, Ben.
Ben was abused as a child by an engineer.
It won't happen again because those examples will come up. I'll remind.
I called Johnny Waterbury at the time, ran. Steam locom- I mean locomotives up the other side of the river, same soils, I said, what do you do when the soils collapse underneath a railroad track? Oh, we drive steel pilings in and reinforce it and take the train back over.
I think they're called helical.
Yes.
All right, but anyway.
Okay, so let's move along, you're you're giving people ideas. I I would like to hear that we do, we don't have to have a vote, but we have consensus to work up an alternative warrant article coming from this board.
Yeah, and then we can decide whether we want to recommend one or the other, or maybe we can recommend neither and let people hash it out at town meeting.
Well, I I'm 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 gonna let people hash it out at town meeting.
Okay, but you're okay if we.
You can do whatever you like.
How does it work so at town meeting, that do people in the room just raise their hands and that's how you vote on it?
Depends on what it is, sometimes people call for a paper ballot, sometimes they don't.
Fifteen, twenty minutes of discussion, people stand up and make their points and and uh. You know, you'll get people on one side, people on the other side, and then people who you can't figure out what the hell they're talking about.
Or then you raise hands.
And then and then somebody calls for a vote.
Okay.
And another alternative you can have, cause this warrant article will probably go near the back, or maybe they'll go. One to the other, but you can change the order of the warrant article, someone can move to here. The second warrant article before the first and then you have to vote on that, it's a a fluid meeting. That has parameters.
Okay.
I guess, I would say.
Sometimes people lobby, like last year we had a.
Yeah.
A group of people that put together, you know, brochures and handing them out to everyone and.
Oh, about the property tax.
Yeah, and that ended up failing, but. Yeah, all right, makes sense.
Okay, so I'm, my notes are gonna show that we have a consensus. We don't know whether we'll recommend or not recommend it, but to draft a second warrant article.
Who's gonna do that, are you gonna do it, or Dino?
Dino and I will probably do it, Dino will do it.
You need help, just holler.
I don't have any issues with engineers, but as soon as you hire them, the repercussions it lasts forever.
Who's hiring an engineer? Alright.
Qualified. I can list so many times.
When you ask them to give an opinion, you're, that's what you gotta do.
All right.
My son's an engineer and he's very funny, he either has nothing to say, or if he has something to say. An hour later, when you try and change the subject, he has just one more point.
My son's not an engineer, he's just like that though.
So, anyway, we are moving on.
Thank you for considering this.
That's great.
You're welcome, and we we now have another little project. Um, and thank you for your interest in a very well thought out letter, which helped at least me think through. The uh, what might be an alternative.
Has a lot of good info in it.
Yep, so, all right. Yes, you are.
No.
You're released. Okay. Um, well, you might wanna stay, but. The next item is to approve and sign a final letter to the property owners on shoe strap and name the name.
Well, actually, the letter was. Being rewritten by somebody and I haven't gotten it yet.
Okay.
Person, so um and plus you could do that at the same time when you meet.
With the draft?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna.
Need to do the draft, you can approve a letter, if you decide to leave both warrant articles in. The warrant, you still, you still have to notify the people.
Right.
Yeah, but they can.
That you're gonna, that there's gonna be a warrant article closing the road.
And that, they don't have permission to go in and do work. I mean, that's my concern in the coming months.
We have those two letters, right?
Right.
And and I thought it was the.
It's the one advising them that they need specific written permission to do work.
That's, that somebody wanted to touch up. So you should do that, because you can do that ASAP.
Okay.
Cause all you need to do is. Make your changes to it, David, and then send it to me, and then I'll send it to these guy, these two, and then we can just send it out to the people.
Okay.
So in the meantime, before March.
You sent it to me already?
I did, but I can resend it, happy to.
Thanks. Are we getting cease and desist those?
It's not a cease and desist.
Recommendations.
It's just, it's just.
Advisory.
Yeah, it's just notifying, by law, you have to notify the property owners in that section. That there'll be a warrant article that will discontinue the road.
That's the one, that's the one.
That's the one letter, and then the other letter is simply saying.
So that are the people who did work on the road with, on their own, telling them that they need town permission to do that.
And it needs to be written.
Not verbal from fifteen years ago.
Right, exactly.
Is that what people said, well, we got permission fifteen years ago?
No, they just said we had oral permission.
From whom?
Right.
Well, fifteen years ago, the select board gave permission for a person who lived there who's now deceased, who did construction work. To do some work on the road.
That's pretty.
And if she hadn't done it, the road would not be there.
That's right.
Another point Ben is making.
When I go home for lunch, I can tell you what it's gonna consist of.
If you were just the czar of life, you could just do whatever you want, what would you do with that road, you you just?
I I never would have called an engineer in the first place that had left the highway department maintained it as they had for two hundred years. And let the traffic go up and fix the slumps as they came and you had to draw, put piers down and like. Shred rock and stay with the slum.
Okay.
And it would.
But that option is foreclosed because somebody did call an engineer at some point.
They called an engineer and they asked for his opinion and opinion, and an engineer will not sign off on something until. It's absolute, he he has no liability, and that's the problem that I'm arguing about engineers, so you just ask them.
There was a slump in that same exact place as there was this last summer.
Yeah.
And. Somebody saw it and somebody was concerned and somebody on the board was concerned and they called an engineer and had him come look at it. And no engineer will go down and look at a road and say, oh yeah, I can guarantee you this is safe.
This is perfect, why did you call me?
It's safe, it won't cave in, don't worry.
They would, they won't just do an honest job, they have to cover their. Cudas.
Well, most of us get to be that way after a while. But it's a, it is a fact of life and it it is very unfortunate, you know.
Uh, town pays for it.
But it's also, you know, if someone decides to take a minivan full of kids down through there and it slumps over.
Yeah, but on the other side of that. That slump occurs when it's extremely wet.
Yes, it does not occur.
Occur when it's dry.
So, I don't know, you know.
You can close the road when it's extremely wet. Because just like, just like Scott control closes roads for mud, you can do that.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah.
Scott had extra time. Scott had extra time for that, it's just Ben.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, now I think we're finished, thank you.
Makes sense.
Our next thorny project is reviewing the medical resource hospital agreement with.
I'm not gonna report, I sent an email to the gentleman.
Thank you.
Who's in charge of the, this on the hospital side and asked him to reach out to me or ask him if he had some time to, you know, fifteen minutes to talk and. He's still, he's disregarding my email, I need to call him now and see if I can harass him and be talking to me, I don't.
Yes.
I would infer from his lack of response that he hasn't had much enthusiasm, but maybe that's wrong.
I'm I'm gonna guess that he probably doesn't. Wanna talk about it, because as I believe you told Dana, it is what it is and you sign it or you don't have coverage.
Although I think he probably would be happy to have a conversation with you, he was very open in saying to me, you know. Have your attorney give my contact to your attorney, so you can have, so he could talk to her, when it was Naomi. So, I'm sure, I'll just send him an email and tell him that you're a board member and you have a couple questions and concerns.
That's what I sent him, I'll send him the email, I sent him a very nice blind email, you know, just wanted to chat with you about this.
Maybe he just thinks you're a rogue select board member.
Well, he's probably figured out he's a lawyer.
Also, now we're gonna go into that category.
Oh, boy.
The worst engineers.
There's some negative Nellies in this room this morning.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be if we didn't have multiple examples of it.
I know.
And in the next board will come along and ball right into the same trap. You know, we wouldn't have a road in town if we consulted engineers on whether it was safe to keep them open.
I I have to say, I do wonder if with helical piers, we could save that road, but I'm, I don't have the heart to do that, it's just. You know? Anyway. So we're gonna punt on the EMS, we're gonna wait till the next meeting.
I'll keep trying.
Well, I hate to burden you with that, but we'll let Dina send something and then we'll see if you get some kind of response.
That's on those.
That that thing. And the thing that allows, it's a contract that allows our EMS people to go into the hospital. And get, they get it, uh, advice, they get supplies.
My feeling on that is, you know, we've lived with it in the past, we'll probably have to live with it.
Could be.
Yeah, I I'm kinda leaning that way myself.
Sounds like, yeah, they have to have, they have to be attached to a hospital somehow, but.
And it's either that one.
The two objections, the two principal objections that I had to that agreement were, one.
They're screwing us.
Well, one, the the indemnification is not reciprocal, so if we do something that breaches the agreement, we're on the hook to indemnify them. If they do something that causes the town to incur liability, they don't have any obligation to indemnify. And then the other thing that really kind of bothered me was, we need their permission to withdraw from the agreement. And that condition, there's no con- there's no condition on their permission, they can be unreasonable in withholding it. Well, it's just obnoxious, so, you know, we.
I think we should cross that out, initial it and sign the agreement and and maybe handwrite in the indemnification thing that it's a mutual indemnification. And send it to them.
Yeah, if they wanna discuss, put it's on the way.
Yeah, I mean.
I just want you to be careful and think of the ramifications, though, um. I mean, we have an old agreement from two thousand fifteen with them that's signed.
Which is arguably not binding on the town because it was not signed by the select.
Well, you could argue that if you want to, uh, um.
Well.
That, okay, but wait, let me finish, that Hitchcock still considers. Ca- us covered by.
Yes.
So.
So the fire chief signed that?
No, the president of the um fast squad did.
Well, why didn't he sign this?
Um.
He doesn't have a legal authority to.
So, takes takes the owners off the town.
Yeah, I thought about that too, but now that we know that this is.
Right, and that's.
Can't do that.
Yeah, the only one who knows it. That's what I'm confused about.
Um, and of course it's, I know it's been, I know it's been the fast squad president, because um. You know, they're the one who is uh ultimately responsible for making sure that the thirty seven pages of. You know, whatever they have to do and have on, you know, board and all that stuff is. Adhere to. It's not the board.
Well, look, seems to me that the two objections we have are are really pretty reasonable and they're not obnoxious.
I find it so, I would, I I think you should talk to Naomi, because I find it so interesting. That Naomi had a huge problem with this for the same reason, or at least one of the.
Two things.
Two things. And then after she talked to other towns and other attorneys who had dealt with it in their town. She came back to me with the total opposite.
Yeah, I'm happy.
This isn't really what I thought it was and, you know, your fast squad needs it and da 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 da.
All right, I'm happy to talk to Naomi, I, you know, like, the thing about needing their permission to terminate the agreement. Like, I, then maybe there's a reason for that.
It's probably because they can't be without an agreement by law.
Who, well, but. That doesn't seem to me to be.
So if they leave, if we say. That we're leaving, you know, they're probably gonna say, okay, well, where are you going? Who's gonna cover you now?
We can't let you leave until we know you have covered.
Okay, well, then that's fine, but then then there should be, then it should say, their permission should cannot be unreasonably withheld, conditioned or 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 delayed.
Well, they should be able to explain that, right?
You know, I I just don't want them to say, nah, we don't feel like it.
Yeah, it's a gap, we we're annoyed with you now and you're gone, or.
Yeah.
We need you.
Kind of consent.
Yeah.
Right.
So I I I think those are really legitimate concerns and it probably should have been worded differently and they probably don't wanna change all of their agreements, but.
Well, they don't have to change all of their agreement systems.
Right.
Okay, so David is gonna talk to.
So you'll talk to Naomi, I'll shoot an email and copy you on it.
And then.
Better luck with her than Joe, man.
Yes, okay, moving right along. We have a temporary timber access permit to be looking at. And it is. In your packet, there is an information piece. And there is a logging access road only permit, which will be signed by the logger. The property owner and will be approved by our road agent, um. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at either of these, I have looked at them, they look very simple, straightforward, they'll process through Jordan.
Sign, I might as well sign.
I don't.
No, you just have to move to.
We just have to move to accept this.
I moved to accept.
Hold on a second.
Okay, Ben, David, all those in favor say aye.
And I'm, David, aye.
Judy, aye, these are approved, um.
And Scott read all this.
I think we might. Temporary timber permit. Okay, approved.
Awesome, wow.
Thank you, good work, Dina and Scott.
I have some stressful discussions earlier before I bring anything else tough to you guys. And it'll slip right through.
Okay, we have. A land use change tax for ten spring rain. An amount of twenty one thousand ten dollars and the last time, I forget who was here, I think it was. Who said, Rich Brown said, anytime we're getting money, we should approve it. Let's see, and that's in our packet.
It's right on that thing.
We do it anyways.
I'm sending you this memo, ten spring lane, the property was sold in December of twenty twenty two. And no longer means this ten acre minimum.
And they're building a house. You can see it, you can see it through the trees up there.
Is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
Ah, very cool.
Yeah, it's a young couple who live in town. His dad grew up around there. Yeah, he he grew up in, well, his dad grew up in Hennepin, he was in my class, I just know them. They've been living at the Heitzman's house at the end of High Street here, renting there, well, they found a place, yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah.
So. Um.
Nursery school.
And there's another young couple in town who's been coming to some of our meetings. Okay, so this is approved.
So you moved that? Well, moved that.
Um, we didn't. Ben, did you wanna move that?
Uh, yeah, I moved it.
Okay.
They're not.
I'll second it.
This this is gonna result in the imposition of twenty one thousand dollar tax on that property. The property owner is expecting this.
Yeah, it's a law.
I would imagine.
I would imagine so.
But, you know. I haven't, I haven't spoken to John. I think I'll, I I think I will reach out just to make sure.
Yeah, so. These people bought it a year ago. And when the change tax comes due and gets calculated, at least in the old days, was the first disturbance of. The land. You put in a driveway or you dig a foundation hole or you do some sort of work and then it's, the tax is due. So.
Well, and my only point is if you're not expecting it and you get a twenty one thousand dollar tax bill, that'd be upsetting and.
Yes, it could.
If they if they petitioned for it or they did something to, you know.
Well, it's easy enough to contact them, but current use law is pretty clear.
When they get a permit to build, they would have been notified by David. That the land is in current use and that there will be, right, and that there'll be a fee.
Okay.
I'll I'll make sure that he's still doing that because I know that was.
Yeah.
Something that was added along.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, that could be very shocking. So Ben moved and I seconded. How do we vote on this?
And I.
David, aye. I mean, it is clear that this is legally required, right?
It is legally required.
If the property owner was shocked by this and wasn't planning on this and I guess they come in and ask for an abatement or something.
Ask for an abatement or he can talk to the person that sold them the property.
Is the land use change tax a one-time thing or this is?
Yes.
And it's only for what you're gonna use.
Okay, well, no, for this, for this, it's the whole lot. It's it's a small, it's under, it's under ten acres. So it is a more expensive one.
But we were talking about tractor sheds. You know, by up on Lambert, I could have a, on my lot up there, I could have a tractor shed. I would just carve out the footprint of the tractor shed. That's what David has told me.
Right, as long as you still have more than ten acres in.
Oh, yeah, a hundred, you know.
But in this case, they.
If you put a driveway and you have to have that included, don't forget.
For forest property?
Yeah, when any disturbance.
Well, the driveway roads are all there.
Well, then, that's already, okay, yeah. But so in this case, they created a lot that was less than ten acres.
You know, I don't know. I just hear a young couple, they're building a house. All of a sudden, they, twenty one thousand dollar tax bill shows up.
It's happened to people in this town before, so.
Yeah.
Don't worry.
Manage that. I'm sure they're not desperate.
Well, I'm sure they're not, but still, that's a big chunk of change and it's nice to know.
Neighborly.
Yes.
By the way, you're gonna get this big bill in the mail.
And it's only because we can see what you're doing out of the town office window.
Okay, we now have a report of wood cut on Clover Mill Lane. Four hundred and ninety five dollars and ninety nine cents.
Pretty small, small cuts. Are we voting on this?
Oh, we need to vote on this.
Money. Anything that involves money.
I'll move it.
All right, David, thank you. Thank you, Ben. All those in favor?
David, aye.
Judy, aye.
Ben, aye.
Thank you. Um, wood cut.
Yeah, but I'm somewhere. My nerves.
Oops, oops, I'm back here. All right.
You guys are whipping.
We are whipping right along.
Yeah, I figured that temporary timber access was gonna take a little longer to talk about.
Well, we could do our non-public and then our Zoom meeting, but that's hard to do.
Well, you could. Right, uh, oh, I could just tell you about the um, the letter from James Graham that he asked me to put on later.
Oh, right.
Um, and I chatted with them. This is about the sending in.
The Lime Electric, yeah.
For the Lime Community Power Electric Aggregation Plan. The final draft is done. It's been reviewed. Um, and now it needs to go electronically to. The New Hampshire Public Utility Commission. Um, so this cover letter is not a letter that the board needs to sign. It's a letter from. James as the committee saying what they did. And then, and then it needs to be electrically sent, electronically sent by the town, not an individual.
Okay.
So that's why it needed to come here, just so you guys know it's gonna be submitted.
We got an email about that. So thank you for that update. Very good, and. So we're scheduled to have. We are getting down.
Yeah, you just have that data verification certificate.
Data verification certificate. So, and then we will have a non-public. Um, the data verification certificate. Is, and we went through this last year. Where you get some preliminary data about property sales in the town. And you're asked to sign this certificate that then goes back to the Department of Revenue Administration. And then they work up a final. Um, report. At which point the information becomes public. And they won't do the final report until we sign this data certificate. We are gonna get a call from Todd. He's gonna join us on Zoom at about eleven thirty, but if we don't need him. We can certainly let him know that we've decided to sign it and off we go.
Right, we're certainly gonna sign it, right? But I, I don't know, when I got the email from Dana, I thought.
Let me explain. There's two separate things.
Okay.
This certificate right here. Only is telling the Department of Revenue that the undersigned. Are certifying that the assessment and sales information, which is all this. Is something that was reviewed by you guys, not the numbers, not the ratios, not. The formula, not anyway. It's just saying that.
Here are the properties.
Here are these, this list of properties that are gonna be used.
Well, so I guess I would like to hear from Todd that he has reviewed this list and he's comfortable that it's accurate because. I looked at it and it doesn't have a lot of meaning to me. I'm not an expert appraiser and I'm not knee deep in this stuff, so. I'd like to hear from Todd that he's looked at it and he feels comfortable. Yeah, I'm sure he has.
The only way it comes out of the system is. It goes, it goes into the system and it goes by Verno number. And Todd has to physically go into the system and match each Verno number with each appropriate property. And sales amount and all that. So he's the one who actually releases it to its Verno number. So they can decide whether they wanna qualify it or not.
Okay, so we we can move into non-public. And have our discussion and then come back and if we can touch base with Todd.
I mean, don't you think that's a good idea? It seemed to me it's not a bad thing for him to kinda.
Yeah.
Advise us. And also, I'd kinda like to talk to him a little bit about his throwaway line in his letter about you might wanna think about doing your.
Oh, the twenty twenty five.
Yeah, early.
And that, well, that was the second thing that I was gonna say. There were two different things. There was the certificate. And there was the preliminary numbers, which. He'll explain to you, and they don't mean they're not final. This was the other big hoo-ah last year. Was they're not final. We don't have papers. We don't have lists. We don't have stuff at this meeting because none of it is um public right now.
Okay.
For publication.
So what we're gonna do. Is you have the Zoom there. You don't wanna go out of the Zoom. We're gonna move to go into non-public session. And I think what we did the last time was to take the computer out into the hallway and close the door.
I can kick these people off is what I can do.
Okay, if you want.
But I can move this out, yes, just to make sure. So, non-public?
Non-public, yes. That's, it's on here. Um, I didn't put it on here, so.
I think it's probably just left there. Um.
Oh.
I'm trying to think, um.
Well, I do think we have a couple of updates from legal that are not yet sufficient that we should talk about.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you made a move, Judy?
I I moved to go into non-public, yes, and it is eleven oh four.
Which basis are we using for going?
Um, I think it's reputation. See, um. Eleven oh four, I've moved.
I'll second.
Thank you, David. All those in favor say aye.
David, aye.
And Judy, aye. Into NPS under C, reputation. And. Thank you all for joining us and we will see you next time. Well, we all wanted you to explain a little bit about, uh. How you, how you arrive. The process.
Well, you gotta unmute.
How's that?
Perfect.
Excellent.
So, so that every, as you know, every year the Department of Revenue takes the sales that occurred in town. From October first of the prior year, in this case, would be October first, twenty twenty two, through uh. September thirtieth of twenty twenty three. I think the rationale is that the date of appraisal is April first. So to stabilize it, they go six months before and six months after the date of appraisal. But, and so what we do is we, we will, we go into their, the DRA's portal and they they get the sales from the registry. Um, every night and what we do is we we match up the sales and and apply, you know, we we tell them it's this property. You know, map four oh seven three, you know, owned by Smith and so on and so forth. So we just, we just basically match up the sales. With the property records. And then they take, and and that, and the property records that the the DRA gets is is what type of a property is, whether it's commercial, mobile home. Waterfront, um, single family, et cetera, et cetera. And, um. So we we tell them, we give them that information and then we, um, you know, we verify that the assessments. And their their policy is that they need twenty qualified sales to do their ratio study. And if there's a strata, which is a subsection of property types, if there's not eight sales in that strata, they they don't really give it much weight. In Lime's case, this last equalization period, you had twenty three qualified sales. And they they didn't end up having some, if they don't have twenty sales, they'll go back into the previous equalization period and and. Take some sales from there to make twenty sales, but this this particular year, you didn't need to do that. You had twenty three. So the results are still on a, are still in draft form because they're waiting for you to sign the cover sheet. That you have. They they call it the pink sheet, but it's not pink anymore. But the results were, um, your. Your median ratio, which is, which is what we use for abatement, was sixty four point eight percent. The um weighted mean, which is what you use for your shared tax rates, county, um. Shared school or uh state was sixty six point one percent. And the coefficient of dispersion, which is the measure of of assessment equity. Is supposed to be twenty or less, according to the New Hampshire Assessing Standards Board. And in in Lime's case, this year it was seventeen point eight percent. So that's, that's under.
I'm sorry, Todd, before you get into the, before we get into talking about those statistics. Uh, we have to sign this thing that says that the numerical data that we're giving to the DRA is correct and accurate and. And and the three of us as selectmen don't really have a way to assess that, so. I just wanna hear from you. Dana says, of course, Todd's looked at all these numbers that we're giving them, that we're we're signing and and swearing to. And he's looked at all that and it it's all correct and accurate and complete. I just wanna hear that from you too. I mean, cause we have to sign off on it.
So I. I I explained the this. Um, current, current concern of yours to the Natalie Duffy at the equal, in the equalization bureau at the Department of Revenue. And she she pointed out that they're not asking you to attest to the results or the analysis. They're just asking you to say that those are the correct properties that sold.
Yeah, and and I'm asking you to tell me that, cause how, how would I know? You're really our assessor, so I I just wanna make sure that you're comfortable that the num, that the, that the data that we're swearing to. There's nothing funny about it or there's no problem with it. It's, it's, we should be, we should feel comfortable signing off on it.
I have a high level of confidence that that's, that's true and 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 as a part of the process, we'll, we'll send. We send up what we think is is the, are the facts to the Department of Revenue. They review it, they come back with questions. So if there's any questions and and maybe any discrepancies or errors, they they'll, they audit it. And they come back and ask the questions before they finalize the ratio. So that that's already been done.
All right, awesome. That makes me feel better. You know, we, the three of us aren't involved in any of those discussions and that process, so. How would we know that that had occurred unless you tell us?
Right.
Although I will tell you that Jordan and I are involved in it.
Yeah.
So, right.
Again.
I mean, I look at it as, I don't know, I don't know everybody in town, but you know, Dana probably does know most people in town, so if there's, if I have a question on any. Circumstances surrounding a sale or whatever, I'll ask, I'll ask around and, you know, check the MLS and, you know, there are, there are some research tools we use to. To to, you know.
All right, so.
To vet those.
What I'm getting is both you and Dana are comfortable that the stuff we're signing off on is uh accurate and complete and not materially misleading in any way. And so on that basis, I'm comfortable signing off on it.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I did give them a list of the properties, so.
Yeah, I know, and I looked at that, but like, I don't have the ability to evaluate that as a standalone document, cause.
At least you saw the list.
Yes, we did see the list. And and so Todd, you were, you were saying the C O D. Uh, the assessment of equity is seventeen point eight percent and I think in the. Letter you sent us or the memo, you think we should be considering next year, the twenty five, perhaps doing, um. A revow. Would you like to get into that issue just a little bit?
Well, it's, it's, yes, I mean, your, your ratio is getting, is getting pretty low. The coefficient of dispersion is under the. Allowable limit, but it's only two point two percent under, so there's not a lot of room for change there. It's possible it could improve with time, you know, if the market stabilizes. I mean, I think it actually is better this year than it was last year and we didn't do anything, so it's, it 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 could improve. It's, it doesn't, more often than not, it doesn't because. Different properties change at different rates and that's what causes the disparity, but over time, but. Um, yeah, so I mean, you might, you may not have to do it, but I think you might wanna have that on your radar next year. Your. Price, price-related differential was one point zero five, which isn't a, which isn't a, um. It's slightly outside of the acceptable range, but that statistic is, you know, it's not. It's not as critical as the coefficient of dispersion and it does give you an idea where your biases are, but. It doesn't tell you how far off they are. So you, what this is telling you is that the properties above the median. Selling price, which I think is around four hundred thousand dollars in in, uh, actually, I can tell you in a. Lime's case, uh, now medium selling price is five hundred and ten thousand, so those that are above five hundred and ten thousand. The PRD is indicating they are assessed a little bit lower percentage than those under five hundred and ten thousand. So that's not to say that the. The multimillion dollar houses are under. Under assessed, but there is a, a, a lot of space between five hundred and ten thousand and two million, so. Just to bear that in mind.
Okay, well, that's helpful. David, more questions?
No, I mean, you, you know, in terms of the politics of this, there've been, there's a small, very vocal group of. People in the town, property owners in the town, who, uh, you may recall, have been pushing for us to do an early reassessment for. At least a year now. Uh, so. But I, I don't know, I mean, what, it sounds like what you're telling me, telling us is that, well, that might make sense for us to, to, to. To calendar that. If we're gonna do that, when do we, what's the timing on that? When do we? And is that something that, that's not something that you would do as part of your normal services that you're rendering to us under your existing contract, right? We have to put this out to bid, or how does?
Well, it would be, it would be a separate contract because it's a separate activity. Um, you could put it out to bid, many towns do, you, you don't, you don't, I don't think there's anything that says you have to. I have another town that just. Decided they wanted to do the, the update this year and, and sign the contract, um. But, but, you know, to be prudent, it might not be a bad idea to put it out to bid and. See what, see what shakes out of the trees, and at least you'll, you've done some due diligence, and I would think that you'd wanna do that probably. If you're gonna do, do the reassessment in twenty-five, I would think probably August or September, you'd wanna put that out there.
And when are we legally compelled to do a reassessment?
You'll have to do it in twenty-six.
We should probably do it.
I, I would be in favor of doing it unless things really change dramatically.
In doing what?
A reas- about next year, uh, twenty-five.
It, it's not uncommon.
I got a tax cut, so I'm hoping I go down a little.
Got a huge increase.
He just reported that that is not gonna happen.
I, I'm not saying it's not gonna happen, I'm just saying it, it's, don't expect, don't expect it to happen.
I was being funny.
Yeah, but, but I also, you know, I, I would say that, uh, you know, there's, there's a shortage of assessors too, so, um. You know, you may have, you may have difficulty finding someone if, if, if it's not me, and, um, but. Uh, a lot of the towns, just anecdotally, a lot of the towns are, are bumping it up a year, just because of the market, you know, the market's gone. Up so fa- so much so fast that the disparity has, has definitely accelerated. You know, any, anywhere you look around the state.
Um. So, when this warrant article. Wh- when the petition warrant article that we had last year, um. You know, the people were saying, well, the, the high-value properties are under, under assessed, and it's not fair, and. You're shifting tax burden onto the poor folks, you know, the, the people with lower value property, uh. And so we wanna do a reassessment, and. One of the responses that, that came up was, well, we just did a reassessment and that's producing this result that you're complaining about. How do you think doing the reassessment is gonna fix it? And the, the response I got from people when I asked that question a couple of times was, well, we're gonna get in their business and just. Look at all the data they're using and, and push them to use the right data and make sure that they're not making this mistake again. I, I'd, I'd like to understand a little bit more about the process. I mean, is that, is that really something that happens, or?
Uh, well, they can try, but I mean, I, I mean, that you're, that might be, that might be part of your challenge to find somebody to do the project. As well. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, um, because, because you have that element among you, um. And I'm not saying that wrong, I'm just, they, they just. What I gathered and some of that, some of what you said, sounds like some things that I said is, you know, we don't, I don't make the market, I react to it. You know, so whatever happens, happens. And I'm not gonna say this is gonna happen or that's gonna happen, but. The sales were what dictated it, and, and I probably said it before, if you had a, you had a property that sold in two thousand fifteen and you reassessed. Lime in two thousand sixteen, which is exactly what happened, and it sold for two, two point five million dollars. And then the new owner put a million dollars into landscaping and then decided, decided she don't wanna live there anymore and tried to sell it and couldn't sell it in. Twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen for two million. It's probably not worth three million, you know, so i- in, in that case, but. But what you're finding everywhere is, because of the downward pressure with the, with the market is, you know, people are getting priced out of these. Nine hundred thousand dollar houses or, I'm gonna say a million dollar houses, and so their, their price range is seven hundred thousand, so they're gonna go. And pay more for, for a smaller house. And then those people that would have been in that, on that rung, they're getting forced down and so on and so forth. So you're fa- you're finding that the, the lower valued properties increased at a higher percentage, which is completely true, that's what happened. And there's, there's nothing you can do except for, except for. Manipulate the system and that's not what the law allows, and I, I, that's not what I want, I.
I don't understand what the process looks like when you, when you or somebody does this.
So, so what'll happen is, is whoever does it should go out and they'll take the, the sales that happened in Lime. Over the past two years, and they'll verify the assessing data to make sure that that's up to date and accurate, and they'll interview the owners. If possible, to the terms of the transaction, or we'll look at the multi-listing service to, to hopefully gather some terms. And we need to call a realtor, we'll call a realtor, et cetera, et cetera. But once you have, your data is fresh and accurate, then you can start changing the rates associated with that data, like. You know, your building base rates or how, how three bedrooms and two bathrooms affects that and so on and so forth. If it's a neighborhood, you can change the neighborhood. All that, so what, so what I'll do is, is, they call that adaptive estimative procedure, which is a recalibration of the existing model. And so we'll just take, we'll, we'll say, you know, I'll say, I'll look at, run a, a ratio study and I'll say. I'll see that my building style, my ranches are, might be at, you know, fifty-five percent where my. Capes are at seventy-five percent, and our goal is a hundred, so I'll change the base rates for the ranches and the capes to bring them up to a hundred. And then, you know, I'll run it again and test it and see how it, see how it played out, and once you've done that, you know. A bunch of times and you're, and you're narrowing it down, you, you'll, you'll, your model's recalibrated and you'll apply those new rates. To all the non-sold properties, so if they have similar circumstances, it'll be affected similarly. So, size of jet, building size, land size, you know, neighborhood, I mean, there's a lot of different areas. You can adjust it.
As you're going through that process and building a model, um, how much opportunity is there for? Public review and input? I mean, it doesn't sound like there's much, which seems appropriate, but.
Done. It's, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be kept confidential until it's, until it's done.
Okay, so, and then when it's done, you circulate it and you get people commenting and making suggestions or changes or. Or, you know what, I, I used to get mad when people criticized my work and, you know, and. I'd be like, ah, these people don't know whether, but then so every once in a while, somebody actually catches a real error and it's nice to have it caught, so.
So there is an opportunity before the project's finalized. So once we, once we, we feel comfortable with the model, we will expose it, you know, let people look at it, and that's, that's when. The preliminary numbers come out and they can come to a hearing or whatever, so there is, there is time before it's finalized for them to gather. Data and do an analysis if, if they choose to. Um, wh- whether, whether I agree with it or not, it's a different story, but I mean, the whole point of the hearings. You know, when we have the in-person informal hearings, or it could be by phone or whatever, but, you know, that's a fact-finding, that's a fact-finding effort, so I do find. Useful information that I didn't, wasn't aware of or didn't consider, so it's, it's useful, it's not just having somebody come in and tell me, I don't know what I'm doing, but. Basically, the way I approach that is, here's, here's what I know about your property, here's, here's what we have for an assessment. Now, tell me what I'm missing, and, and then it goes from there.
And also, Todd, once you set the model up, they call that the Use Pap Report, right?
Well, the, the Use Pap Report comes at the end, but that's just basically.
The model and all your data and all that is reviewed and either approved or not approved. By the D R A, correct?
Yeah, so, so all the, all the tables that are in the CAMA system are, are in the Use Pap Report, and the D R A. The D R A does, does review the, the statistical outcome, and that's how they determine if it's. If it's been done properly, they, they'll look at the ratio studies and they also look at the narrative in the Use Pap Report, and. It's supposed to explain what you did and why, and so on and so forth.
All right. Okay.
And we have had citizens, especially from the revale in twenty-one, actually come in and look through that and. Spend time.
Yeah, I think we've, we've got a, a small. Group of people who's real fired up on this issue.
Right.
But we ought to make sure that, that we, you know, when. I mean, Todd ought to do his work the way he thinks he needs to do it in order for it to be correct and accurate, but at some point. Prior to finalizing it, we ought to allow enough time for us to be able to circulate a, a draft model, have. You know, so the people aren't reviewing it in two days. That they have, they have a little bit of time to review it and think about it, and then we ought to have a hearing or some sort of, some sort of place where people can come back and provide input. Now, like he says, we might not agree with their input, or we might say that you're misunderstanding this, or this is, this is wrong, but we oughta. In my view at least, from a, you know, furtherance of democracy perspective, we oughta. Give people the chance to review what we're doing here and have their say about it, and we either. Accommodate that, or, or we either take that into account or we don't, depending on whether we think it's right or not.
So, so that, I usually like to give two weeks lead time, at least, between, between the release of the preliminary values and the week of the hearing, so. I mean, I'm hoping that two weeks gives them enough time to gather information, but we can do a month or whatever, I mean, I don't.
Two weeks seems fun.
But you're talking about individual property owners, that's who you're talking about. You're not talking about people just coming in and reviewing the Use Pap Report.
The Use Pap, Use Pap Report won't be done until thirty days after the values are. Cuz they, you can't write something that is, that, on something that isn't finished yet, so you have to wait till it's finished, and then you can write the report.
I just wanted to make sure we were all talking about the same thing.
Yeah, I, I agree that P R is, is a, is a, should be a high priority. And, and I also agree that, that there should be sufficient time after the preliminary numbers are, are exposed to, for people to review it. The people, people are pretty quick to point out their neighbors, you know, my neighbor's got this, my neighbor's got that.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. No, I think two weeks is good, and I think that's a good plan to. We'll never satisfy everybody, but at least we can.
You know, last time, they made an attempt to manipulate the data.
Right.
Uh, on other people's property to benefit themselves.
Right, so we just need to be cognizant of that, but we give them an opportunity to look.
Yeah, I mean, I can promise you that, that. I'm not gonna be manipulated and I'll, you know, I mean, I won't do the project if, if, if that's the case, but no.
We, we don't, we don't think that's gonna happen.
We don't think so, no.
We wouldn't be surprised if it happened again with her friends.
Right, we may see the same group, but. We'll deal with it when we see it, if we see it.
Yeah, I mean, it's like I said.
I just want there to be a, a, a process that is fair and, and. Has been there and it's fair and transparent.
They just don't believe it.
Chose not to do it, uh, accept it.
We'll give them a little extra time and.
Yep.
Yeah, the, the out, the outcome is, wasn't the desired outcome, even though it's what happened.
Right.
Right.
And that's, that's sa- similar, similarly happening around the state, and. I mean, it's gonna, it'll go the other direction, possibly at some point, and then everybody will be, the, the shift will go somewhere else, and it, it happens. And that's why we do it every five years or, or sooner. Just stop those inequities.
Okay.
Sounds good. Todd, thanks for taking the time to throw it again.
Hey, no problem, anytime.
All right, well, we look forward to this next year with you. All right.
Hey, before you sign up, is, is there any benefit to doing, uh. Put, if we're gonna, if we're gonna solicit bids or, or get started on this, is there any benefit to starting before August? Should we do it now?
Can if you want, I mean, I don't think, I, that, it might hit the round file with the vendor in this far out, but. I, I guess, at least you'd be, you'd be on the, on the front burner for, for twenty twenty-five for whoever, whoever's out there. It would, I, I, I've seen him, I've seen him a, a year out before, so he wouldn't be the first town to do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay. We need to, uh. You okay?
Yeah.
We need to go back into non-public session.
Okay, but you've done everything.
But we've done everything, so we can just unmute it. We have. To finalize what we were talking about before, and I think there's one other issue of a similar ilk. Um.
So did I just sign, and then we need to sign for, okay, so we're good on that.
So Judy's moving.
I'm moving.
I'll second.
Thank you, David. All those in favor say aye.
David, aye.
Okay, it's approved, and I have eleven thirty-eight.
Okay, bye, Jordan.
And did you, uh. That off?